Morning. It's nine o'clock. We will call the Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 Board Meeting in session and roll call will show that all Commissioners are present. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance of the United States of America and in truth a republic for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business, we have Marlese Tanner here. We're going to be presenting recognition awards to our 2017 outgoing Board and Committee members.
Good morning. It's the Board's pleasure to annually recognize and thank its outgoing Board and Committee members. This year's form, 2017 Board and Committee members being recognized collectively represent 33 years of service to the county. It's the Board's pleasure to again recognize these members for their dedicated service and the many contributions they have made to the county. I'd ask that the Committee members step forward as their names are read to be recognized. Dennis Ritter. Dennis served on the Fee Lot Review Committee from 2019 to 2017. In recognition of nine years of service to the residents of Stearns County, we thank you, Dennis. John Kribel. John served on the Planning Commission from 2012 to 2017. In recognition of six years of service to the residents of Stearns County, we thank you, John. And John Omsheid. John served on the Stearns County Park Commission from 2009 to 2017. In recognition of nine years of service to the residents of Stearns County, we thank you, John. While unable to be present today, we'd also like to recognize the service of Bernice Burns. Bernice served on the Great River Regional Library Board from 2009 to 2017 and her service was greatly appreciated. While that concludes our formal recognition of Board and Committee members, we'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize the dedicated service of Matt Somalia. Matt served on the Community Corrections Advisory Board from 2014 until his tragic passing in a plane crash on January 23rd of this year. We'd like to extend our condolences to the Somali family and also to know that Matt's service will be missed on the CCA B Board. So, all right, and a round of applause for our dedicated members.
Thank you, Marlese. With that, we're up to our Public Access Forum. Is there anyone here to speak at the Public Access Forum? Anyone wishing to address the Board on issues that are not found on today's agenda may do so at this time. Speakers are asked to approach the microphone. Individual comments are limited to three to four minutes. Total allotted time for this forum is 10 minutes. Citizen may speak at the Public Access Forum once per month. County Board members will not engage in dialogue with speakers but rather refer to the matter to the appropriate county department. Good morning, again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. The Sterns-Sock River Watershed. On our agenda today, we are be looking at a possibility of a new building, building site. I guess I wasn't planning on speaking this morning but being an opportunity here. What would be the Board's, I guess, best position to be to lease, to buy, or go for the watershed to go ahead and build a new building? Which would the Board favor most? We have options of both to us. Just thought I'd feel the out quick being I'm here.
You want our opinion on it?
Yeah, I'd like to have the Board's opinion. Now, we know, kind of gives us a guide which way to go.
Well, it sounds like a real estate question, so I guess I'll take at bat here. The decision should be driven by the level of local commercial rents. If local commercial rents are relatively cheap, it makes sense to rent. If local, if office and commercial property market in that area is fairly tight, then building could be a consideration. Not knowing that market, like maybe I could, I can't give you advice beyond that, but there's your yardstick.
Thank you. I just want to get a feel because we have both options. Socks Center would put up a building for us to lease and if we kind of know how the Board feels about it, it gives us which way to go right off the bat if we're going to do something, so.
If it looks like a deal.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in the Public Access Forum?
Good morning. I just wanted to come this morning and introduce myself.
Could you give your name and address, please?
My name is Jolene Foss. I am the Executive Director of the St. Cloud Downtown Council. I just wanted to come this morning and introduce myself to you and get to meet each one of you personally and let you know that I'm excited to be working here in downtown St. Cloud. I had a nice conversation with Mr. Williams on the phone to show the support that the St. Cloud Downtown Council has in partnering with Stearns County on projects. Previously worked in the city of Princeton, so I've made some good connections with Malax County and Sherburne County. I've worked at a legislative level as well, so I'm interested in seeing how we can partner together and to just introduce myself and say hello this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we're going to go to Item C, the Consent Agenda. The Board, whatever your wishes.
I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. We will recess the regular Board meeting at this point to conduct the Human Services Board. We have Melissa Huberty here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Melissa Huberty and I, the Human Services Board. And this morning, we have only two Consent Agenda items, and they are D1 and D2 on pages 14 through 17, and wondering if you have any questions.
I'll move both items. I'll move the Consent Agenda, Human Services Consent. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We are up to Item E on Parks, and we have Ben Anderson here.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm here, Ben Anderson, with Stearns County Parks. I'm here this morning to ask, we're seeking a $25,000 grant from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Federal Recreation Trail Grant Program. This $25,000 would be used to assist with seal coating and crack filling between the city of Avon and St. Joe on the Lake Wobegon Trail. The $25,000 match that is proposed will come directly from the 2019 Parks Budget. In the past, we have used, we've budgeted around $50,000 for trail maintenance, of which that $25,000 would be part of that $50. Any questions on that?
I'll move the Recommended Action.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Very good. And I just have one quick other item. I just want to give you an update on the Lake Wobegon Trail Extension. The bridge across the Sock River was set last Friday. It was very successful. It looks great. There is no decking on it yet, but we're on schedule to complete that project probably the end of May, June, early June, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Item F, Public Works. Jody Teicher.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jody.
My first item today is I'm asking the Board to authorize advertising for bids for SP 073-650-010, and that is the resurfacing of County State Highway 50 from about six-tenths of a mile, excuse me, north of County Road 2 all the way up to County Road 59. There's a map included in your packets. I'm asking the Board to approve a bid opening date of March 22nd, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
My next item is informational only. I wanted to give you information on the 2018 Minnesota Transportation Alliance Washington DC fly-in. This year's fly-in will be held from Tuesday, May 22nd through Thursday, May 24th. I wanted to get this information out to you. I know the Transportation Alliance has a small block of rooms reserved at Hotel Lombardi where a few of the events will be held, so I would recommend if you are interested in going, let me know, and I can work with Administration to make sure that you get your room reserved, and then we can certainly work to get the registrations for the fly-in, the rest of the events as well. So, that's informational only, and then I have no miscellaneous unless the Board has something for me.
Is there an agenda for that meeting?
I don't know if it's out on the website. I can take a look and I can email it out. Typically, there is a Tuesday afternoon panel that discusses the latest going on with transportation in Washington. Wednesday mornings, breakfast with our Congressional delegation, meetings with our Congressional delegation throughout the day. There's a reception with our Congressional delegation on Wednesday night, and then Thursday morning, there's a wrap-up of everything that's going on typically.
The Administration is, for transportation funding, is proposing a combination of federal, local, and private money for, I presume, highway construction, but, you know, transit folks always get their hand in here. So, if you could learn something about that, or maybe it's not far enough into the process to get an accurate perspective.
I do know we will be joining the Wisconsin delegation, or their version of the Transportation Alliance as well for part of, or a few of the meetings, and so as soon as that's all figured out and pinned down, I will get that agenda out there as well.
Thank you.
An FYI for you, that Tuesday, May 22nd is a County Board meeting as well.
It is. I did realize that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, in response to your question, you know, I think it's very important that, you know, we look forward to the proposal that might come out of Washington from the President on infrastructure, because if it's going to be a combination of those folks having money ready available, that would be a nice way for us to leverage to get some of our projects done, where I think some of the other states that maybe don't make the investment that we do in Minnesota in infrastructure won't have those dollars available. So, I think it's very prudent that we're proactive and are ready to go, and, you know, we've got some pretty big projects. I know Highway 23, 94 are two, you know, large projects we want to see completed in the area, so.
I mean, I hate to be critical about transit, but it hasn't worked out state really well. Works great in the metro for the train system, so I think we, it was an expensive experiment, but it was an experiment nonetheless.
Anyone else have anything for Jody? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
We are up to Item G. We have Sheriff Goodmanson here for a presentation on the Public Safety Management Recommendations.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Sheriff Don Goodmanson. And with me is Chief Deputy John Lentz, and I also have my Administrative Assistant Kelly Wertz. Not that I can't run the technology, well, I probably can't, but I brought Kelly along just to introduce her to you as one of the two authors of the newsletter. And so Kelly and John put that together every single week and do, and I think, do a very nice job with it, and I hope you enjoy it. Thank you. Yes.
It's short enough, so I read it.
There you go. All right, last, in September 2016, the Board approved CPS M Study, which is the Center for Public Safety Management from the ICMA. That study came through June or July with 95 recommendations, and I picked 12 this morning just to go over very briefly for you. And Recommendation number two was that consider the realignment and organizational structure as described in this report and utilize the suggested organizational chart as a working document to ensure the appropriate alignment of the organizational command and control. Reorganization of the Sheriff's Office has been completed. They have a new Chief Deputy, obviously, a new Lieutenant in charge of Administrative Services, a new Lieutenant in charge of Patrol, and also a public service safety supervisor, essentially a person in charge of dispatch. I'd like to say that this is probably, well, I know it is, the strongest management team overall that I've ever inherited. And, you know, there were some gaps. I think some budget experience wasn't on the part of our Lieutenants and the Chief Deputy, but they've made up for that as time has gone on. But I think the Board, and certainly my successor, can be confident going into the future with this management team. So, Recommendation number three was to work with the police chiefs to improve the relationship between administrations of those agencies in Stearns County Sheriff's Office. I think there's been a marked improvement in our working relationship with the local police departments. In particular, I think the smaller police departments, and we've always, obviously, had a really strong relationship with St. Cloud and made it stronger as the weeks and months have gone by now. We attend their chiefs' meetings. We have a personal relationship and a professional relationship. I think that's been strengthened significantly. Recommendation four was to improve internal communications, top to bottom, ensure that all members of the organization, where departments work planned, their input is valued. We have, we've had two, what we call "all hands," which are having all of the deputies come in and meet with me and the staff. That's not, that was not done in the past. And we take question and answer and go through things. Obviously, we talked about the newsletter. We also have had meetings with jail and dispatch, and now we're starting informal monthly meeting with all the union stewards in the jail. Had a little bit, couple bumps in the road with the union in the jail, so we're meeting with HR, me, John, and we've had a couple months of that, and it's gone very, very well. We had swearing-in ceremonies for staff, which was not done in the past, which would bring families in and start people off on the right foot. All right, number five, succession planning training. Ensure all employees are trained and mentored, serve as future leaders of the organization. A newly promoted sergeant in charge of training, sergeant has a BA degree, also spent 13 months in Iraq. He's only 30 years old, a lot of energy. We're trying to go down, monitor our training of all of our staff and make sure that everyone's up to date on all kinds of different areas. Number six, discontinue the practice of voice recording reports on incidents that do not require a formal police report. This is probably one of the key areas here. What I found was we were doing long-form reports, which take a lot of time, on essentially meaningless things. So, they're things like car in a ditch, alarms, dog issues, whatever, and not, the computer allows us just to put notes into the CAD, but it also on traffic citations, they were doing long-form reports. And I think we freed up, you know, 20 to 40% of officers' time, but certainly maybe 40% of sergeants' time from reading those meaningless reports and correcting them, to do what they're supposed to do, police work and supervision. And as John knows, you know, I kind of yelled at him when I first got here, "How come my sergeants are sitting in the office all the time?" And he said, "Oh, you know, they're doing reports." Like, "They're actually, we're doing reports, but they're pretty meaningless." And now they're out, or they should be on the road. Number eight, this false alarm ordinance, which the Board is well aware of. I think we respond to 600 a year of false alarms, so you got officers driving, sometimes rapidly depending upon the nature of the business. You got citizen issues, officer issues, just driving and mileage issues, and so now we've developed a form so that when we respond to a false alarm, we hand it to them that says, "Okay, you get a few free passes, but you're not going to be able to continue with that, and we will charge you as time goes on." I think this will improve rather dramatically over the course of a year or two. Number 13, assign a sergeant to detective units to ensure greater guidance or oversight. It's one of the things that did kind of surprise me when I came was there was not a supervisor in charge of investigations. And so Lieutenant Weiss, who was here today, was assigned to be the supervisor in charge of investigations full-time. He's very skilled, been an investigator in the past. So, we've upgraded our training. One of the new things that we're going to do, starting very soon is, where we started, is to respond to death scenes, so that in the past Patrol might have handled not homicide, but suicide, accidental death, farm fatality, industrial fatality, death of a person under 18, some unusual deaths. I'm used to, and I think this is the right policy, to have investigators go to all of those scenes. It's better to deal with the family, better to, the family and the medical examiner. You have a real nice form that we just created to deal with families. They also gain experience in death investigations. So, I've always had them respond, not to traffic fatalities, unless there's something unusual, but they, because the State Patrol takes, helps us on all of those. 14 and 15 together, this is the property and evidence duties. We're now going to post a property room technician. Obviously, property rooms are critical to the integrity of the criminal cases, but also to the organization. We want to barcode the evidence. Bar, so, barcoding like at a grocery store, I mean, that's been around for 25 years. We haven't done that, and we'll do that now going forward. Number 42 was hire retired police officers to conduct pre-employment investigations. This is, we have three part-time, two former deputies and a former lieutenant from the DNR who wrote their policy, actually, on background investigations. They're on board. This will free up significant time for all of the lieutenants, and this is something that's common in every police organization. 48, create two new dispatcher supervisor positions. What we did here is, we did not do that. We kept one dispatcher supervisor retired. We use the savings in that to put five lead dispatchers in. They have been promoted and they are working so that you have essentially 24-hour supervision for a dispatch. And as busy as they are, that's been necessary. And if we're going to have a new relationship either with another county or another agency, we need to have 24-hour dispatch supervision. Number 67, add a position per shift to jail staffing. One of the things that we've done here is to put in process specialists to do booking. I always say, "Life is the study of bottlenecks." Where's the bottleneck? That's always the question, at least that I ask. In the bottleneck, I came to work on a Monday, we had 34 people to be booked into jail, but you also have, all of those people have to be in court, and we were up against it. So, what I've done in past agencies is put in professional bookers. They're, they just, they're data entry people, and we've, we've got those people on board. Now, the DOC was reluctant to let me to do that in the past, and now they go around and encourage other people to do it because obviously they invented this idea, and so those process specialists really speed up our booking process. And those are just the ones I have. What I would do in the next week or so, it might be a little over week, I've got people taking winter vacations. Your old sheriff's not going to take one, but they're going to be out in, but I will give you updates on every single one of these, and I'll just email them, and just email them to you, and so that you have an update on all, every recommendation, and showing that we have, I think, made significant progress in the last eight months, or just short eight months. Obviously, the weathering cases, the thermal socks dried a couple times in between, but we expect that will, I think we've been to see the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, on that. So, happy to take any questions?
Anyone have any questions, the Sheriff? The Sheriff, no?
Yeah, Sheriff, I can just ask, maybe just for public, that might be viewing, how many Patrol deputies, if that's the correct word, are usually, are on staff, and then how many are maybe out and about at any one time period during the day?
Mr. Chair, I'll let the Chief Deputy answer.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, typically the way the shift is divided up is, the day shift consists of five Patrol Officers and a Sergeant. During the daytime, we have an additional two officers who are assigned to the Civil Process Division, and one dare officer who are also available. Obviously, their primary duties are not patrol, but they are available if need be. At noon this year, also as part of the CPSM study, they recommended that we adjust our shift a bit. We used to have two officers on each side of the schedule that came in at four. CPSM recommended starting them earlier in the day to cover some of our busier times. So, those officers now start at noon and work till 10 at night, so in addition to the five that are already on, and that's provided nobody's on vacation or sick or whatever, but in addition to those five, then two more officers will come on at noon. So, the day shift works seven in the morning till five at night. At five o'clock then, another five officers will come on, and they'll still be those additional two from noon working till 10, and then at nine o'clock, another five will come on. So, between nine and three in the morning, when most of the time, especially in the summer, you're going to be your busiest, there's anywhere probably between 10 and 12 officers working, provided again, nobody's on sick leave, FMLA, vacation, whatever it might be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Merrick?
Well, first of all, thank you for the updates here, and thank you for the weekly newsletter. I'm wondering, is there value in sharing in summary fashion these updates with the public, you know, through the county website? You know, I don't need an answer now, but just kind of food for thought. I don't know if there would be or not, but just something to think about, maybe when you come back next time, you could, maybe good, maybe bad, whatever.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, I work with Dr. Williams, and it makes sense. I think that wouldn't, wouldn't be any harm in that. It'd be easily done.
And there's, I think there's probably more attention on the Sheriff's Office in the county than any other department, and so folks throughout the county would have, would have that information. I think it might have value, but I don't know. I'll let you folks work it out. I'll let you folks work it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else here?
Just, Mr. Williams? Thank you, Sheriff. On your last slide, you noted that you've just implemented the twelve-hour shift in the jail.
Oh, yeah.
Might you tell us how that, how that has gone? I know it's only been a few weeks, though.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that's pretty common in the business is they have twelve-hour shifts in the jail. And the reason is, first, it's a very difficult job to do multiple days in a row. There's certainly a reduction in overtime with that. But it allows correctional officers to have every other weekend off, in a three-day at that, and every sixth weekend, they get four days off. So, I, let me just run that by. So they work Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday. Then they work Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So you think that's the busiest time in a jail, actually, that's the best time, even though a lot of people are being booked in. The reason is, they're not going to court. A lot of people aren't going to court, not going to the doctor, whatever, on, particularly on Saturday and Sunday. So they work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, off. On Monday, Tuesday, work Wednesday, Thursday, now off, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Otherwise, they went multiple weeks without having time off. And in my experience in the past and other sheriffs, it stabilizes your work environment, and so that you don't have this significant turnover in this business. And I sent that article with, about the federal system using their cooks and electricians as, as correctional staff. But we were down, and now we're kind of stabilizing as we get people trained in. So we're in week three, is that right? Week three, and so now, everyone's experienced that Friday, Saturday, Sunday off. I think you'll be, you'll be pleased with this for your agency, but it also, again, I think there, we can see a significant reduction in overtime as a result of that, as time goes on, as soon as we get back up to full staff. It's the norm in the business in larger sheriff's offices. And I, again, I, you know, so far, they've just started, but they've been, they've been pretty positive about it. You know, but some of the ones that may not have been so positive, my point is, just try it. Just try it. You're working long anyway. It's easier in the long run, especially if you get time off. And you've got less commutes. I mean, you think about it, right? If you've got a long commute, you've got, how many less? Eighty? Some eighty less commutes. Of course, I had some people tell me, "I was off, I'm spending more money, you know, because I'm off." But it, it works out fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrick?
Yeah, on the twelve-hour shift, that prompts another question for myself. In, in the nursing, there's, there's twelve-hour shifts, and I always wonder, when you get to those last four hours, what, you know, if there's a falloff. There's, there's someone that I knew that worked for, for, for Mind dot at one time, and they had about ten-hour days during the summer, and then back to eight-hour days. And he said, "They were really happy when it was back to an eight-hour day." So can you comment on that part of it, about those extra hours?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, and I, that is a valid issue for our staff. On the other hand, having the time off actually is better for them, we've found. Then, here's what had happened in the past. They, they get extended anyway, so they end up extending for two hours or four hours, end up working ten or twelve, but then they work more days in a row. Now, you know, obviously, for those of us at a certain age, it might be a lot harder, but for this, for the most part, we have a lot of very young people working it.
You were looking at me when you said that.
Well, and you were looking back at me, I know.
Come on, this one. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lenzman?
One of the conversation, in one of the conversations we've had, you made an insightful comment, that while you're changing a lot of things, there are some things that you're not changing, because you don't want to lock your successor into something that they might not, they might do otherwise. Can you give examples of that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzman, in particular, I think the number-one recommendation was to do a four- or five-year plan, and I've done those in the past, had good success with them. But I wouldn't want to lock my successor into those things in particular. One of the things that I'll do, I think, as we move into the election season, that I've done in the past, is either update all of the candidates on the issues that we're facing, the issues that, things that we're changing. In addition, I have a file in my office that just says 2019, where I'm putting things in that file, that the new sheriff can go over and ask me questions about. Each week, I send an update of things that wouldn't be in the newsletter, things that we've done to Dr. Williams and Mr. Hamis. And one of the reasons I do that, first, is to update them, but also, someone can take a look at each one of those weekly updates and know where we were and what the decision was, and some of the thinking behind it as well. I try to put some of my thinking behind some of the changes that we're making. And so someone could, they should be able to pick that up and see from week to week, all the way through to the end, where we, the decision-making and what we've done. So, and that's, and one of the things that I always try to do is to think always at the, in the end, who the end, what my ending will be, and how that person can hit the ground running. And, and I think we should be fine with that.
And then there's an idea that I think is in incubation, there's an idea floating on joint dispatch concept, is, does that has possibilities? I mean, is that realistic?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzman, short answer, yes. I think there is some genuine possibilities. Perhaps we could visit about that a little bit this afternoon, and, and talk about it a little bit, a little bit longer.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you both. With that, we're up to item H, Dr. Williams, County Administrator, to report on the citizen survey that was sent out.
And we'll turn this over to Mr. Hamis. As you know, we, we conducted a citizen survey last fall, and there's a lot of results from that survey, and Steve's going to run us through those.
And you say the word "run"?
No, no, we have, you have plenty of time.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Sheriff.
Don didn't steal all your time.
We did have a debate about, about that earlier this, last week. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Steve Hamis, the Assistant Administrator, and as Dr. Williams indicated, I'm going to be going through the results from the citizen survey that was sent out last fall. The survey was sent out to sixty-five thousand four hundred and seventy different households throughout the county in the end of September of last year. And all of the submittals that we got back by the end of October were included in the results. The survey had both an online or a paper component, where citizens could respond in either format. To produce the survey results, we worked with Wrangle Printing in terms of printing the survey and getting it sent out to everyone. Disc Information Services did all the collection and collating of the results, and the SESU Survey Center was the outfit that ran the analysis and provided the report. The full report, which is well over four hundred pages, will be put on our website in the very near future, as well as this presentation, so that people can take a look through all the information for themselves. And I see in the audience that we do have Joel here from Wrangle Printing, and Dr. Catrill, and Dr. Hamish Breaker from SESU, who worked on, on the survey analysis. I'm not going to go through everything, because just as with the sheriff, I could probably talk for several hours, going through all the information that's, that's contained therein. But I just want to go over high-level information in terms of county governance, customer service, and quality of life issues that were brought up in, in the survey. Before that, very quickly, just to look at participation, again, sixty-five thousand surveys were sent out. Three hundred and seventeen households submitted those surveys online. You know, the vast majority, you know, over eleven thousand of these surveys were sent back in hard copy format. And so we have a total of just under twelve thousand surveys that were submitted, which is an eighteen percent turn rate, which is very, very good for a male survey. Now, we have several variables that we are using in our analysis. One, of course, is Commissioner District, but because of the size of the third and the fifth districts on the west end, the county being so large, one of the things that I asked the survey sender to do was to break up the third and fifth districts into two blocks, so we could dig a little deeper. Now, certainly, we do have the data set, and we can continue to mine the data for more information in the future. We can get down to zip codes and things like that. But for today's purposes, I have some questions that I broke out, the third and fifth, into two different sections, so you can see the black lines on the district map indicating where those districts were split into. So you've got Avon, Holdingford, and St. Stephen, what I call three north, and then, you know, Cold Spring, Richmond, Kimball, and three south. And then in the fifth district, Sock Center, and Melrose, and Albany Bean, five north, and Painesville, Bruton, and Belgrade Bean on five south. So, just to keep that in mind as we go through the presentation. The first question is, is Stearns County a good place to live? And you can see here the results, that it's skewed to the left as we go through most of these, you know, typically, you, in most statistics, look for a bell curve to see that it's a nice, even distribution. And so if it's skewed to the left, it's typically in a positive direction. If it's skewed to the right, there's some work that needs to be done. So in terms of the first question, you have roughly seventy percent of the population that indicates that living in Stearns County, it is a good place to live, they either agree or strongly agree with that statement. And very few people disagree or strongly disagree. Looking at that question, and again, there's different things we can do for breakouts to look at how the information lays out. I did break it out by, again, Commissioner District. And again, for some of these, I did combine the strongly agree and disagree, strongly agree and agree, and strong, I strongly disagree and disagree, to give it more of a dichotomy, just, you know, two different numbers to look at. And you can see that the, in the fifth and, and third districts, we have a positive rating of over eighty percent. And in the first and fourth districts, those are only in the sixties. So again, the more urban areas have more issues with living in Stearns County than the west end. I decided to look at it by age as well, and the trends are showing that the older you are, the more likely you feel that Stearns County is a good place to live. So, again, it ranges from when you're younger, in the mid-sixties, all the way up to over eighty percent when you're in, over sixty-five. The second question talked about what is the one best thing about being in Stearns County. These are the top eight answers. There were like sixteen answers you could choose from, and so I chose the top eight here. As you can see, the top two, the family is here, the second one is the small-town feel, and then the numbers drop off considerably as you go down the list. So certainly, the top two are very strong in terms of the responses. Now, for this question, I did want to break it out based on what people felt in each Commissioner District was the one best thing about being in Stearns County, and I wanted to look at the top three to see if there's any trends. So you can see that the family being here is the strongest answer in four of the five districts. The third district is more about the small-town feel, but it's not statistically significant. The confidence level for this survey is about two and a half to three percent, so it's, it's not enough of a difference to make any, any significant change. You can see that in the first district and the fourth district, the number two and three reasons that they feel that this is, it's a great place to live, is that there's colleges here, and the employment opportunities that exist. In the second, third, and fourth districts, again, you still have that small-town feel and a good place to raise children, are the second and third responses that came across. Wanting to look at that, again, that same question, based on age breakdown, to see if there's any trends or differences there. For, the, the top response for any age group was that the fact that family is here in the, in the area. The second and thirds are different based on the age demographic that we're looking at. So for the youth, again, it's the colleges and the opportunities that are there, and the employment opportunities. When you're from twenty-five to forty-four, and forty-five to sixty-four, in your, you know, age groups where you're predominantly, you know, married, having kids and raising them, the small-town feel and the, the fact that the area is a good place to raise children stand out strong. And then when you hit sixty-five, the small-town feel is, is important, and medical care, and our access to all the facilities in the area stand out as a strong reason for why living here is a good thing. The third question is, what is the one thing that most needs improvement in, in Stearns County? And again, there are many different options that you had. I put on the values for the top four, so safety and crime, feelings on, on those two issues, was the most strongly felt thing that needs to be improved, that's at twenty-seven percent. Second, our road conditions throughout the county came in at sixteen percent. Traffic and traffic congestion was just right behind it at fourteen. And the fourth most concerning thing for residents was internet access at just under nine percent. And that leads us into, well, I'm sorry, I got to, I didn't go into this question a little more, again, to see if there's differences between Commissioner Districts in what people thought the most, most needed improvement area was. As you can see, road conditions are of most importance in the third and fifth districts. And safety in related to crime issues were the most significant issue in both the first, second, and fourth districts. The thing that I find the most interesting is that road conditions and traffic, again, are consistent through the east end of the county, but coming in in third place in both the fifth and the third districts is that that internet access is concerning out there. And again, we did have that broadband report that Mike had done a few months ago. And that then leads us into the series of questions that the survey had regarding broadband access. So the fourth question just asked households whether or not they thought that the internet access that they had was sufficient for their needs. And you can see here, again, it's skewed to the left, where, again, just over half of the, of the households in the county indicated that they either agreed or strongly agreed that their internet access was okay. There is still, you know, twenty-five percent of the population that says that they disagree, that they don't have enough internet access. Again, breaking this down to look at areas of the county, just at the Commissioner District level, you can see that by each Commissioner District, in one, two, and four, it is over half, but in the third and the fifth districts, it is less than half that feel that they have the internet access. And again, that explains the response on question number three. Again, I wanted to break this one out a little more to see what was going on, so this one is, I did break out by the seven different areas. And so if you look at the strongly agree, the highest strongly agree category is in the north half of the fifth district. And if you remember from that broadband discussion that we had here a few months ago, Melrose has the fastest and most, most stable internet access of anywhere in the county. And so it's not surprising, then, that based on the fact that they have that, that they, their area was the one that had the strongest for strongly agree. And the area that has the weakest internet access, at least in terms of strongly agreeing that they have enough, was the fifth district in the southern half, the area around Painesville and Belgrade and Bruton. The other thing I'd like to point out on here is, if you look down in the strongly disagree area, the area of the county that felt that they have the least broadband access is the north half of the third district, which is, again, the Avon, Holdingford, and St. Stephen area. Again, I wanted to look at internet access by age breakout, and again, the younger you are, the more likely you do not think that you have enough internet access. When you get over to the sixty-five and over, then over half the population thinks that they're okay. The fifth question asked whether or not the county should be involved in improving people's internet access, and, and the results on that indicate just under sixty percent of the households think that the county should be involved in improving broadband service across the county. Looking at that, based on a breakout of Commissioner Districts, as you can see, the first three districts, it is, you know, a sixty, forty split, thinking that the county should be involved. A lesser percentage in the fourth and fifth districts, in terms of support for county involvement. And again, breaking that out by the seven areas, you can see that in the fifth district, again, the reason why there's less of a need in the fifth district, that they think the county should be involved, is that the lowest area of support was that fifty-one and a half percent in the north half of the fifth district, which again, is the Melrose area where they have the best internet in the county. But the strongest area where they think that the county should be involved is the southern half of the fifth district, where, again, they indicated in the previous question that they have the worst internet. So, for the, your consideration. Again, looking at age breakdown for this question, should the county be involved? It really didn't have much variation, again, the confidence level of two and a half to three percent. There's not a lot of difference. Again, it's just when you get to the old Again, it's just when you get to the older generation of over sixty-five that there's a little bit weaker support for the county to be involved in this area. The sixth question, it was the flip of that. You think the county should be doing something, but should the county be using tax dollars to help you with improving the internet service? And here, sixty-five percent of the households do not feel that we should be using tax dollars to be improving internet. Again, I wanted to break this out by the, the five commissioner districts, and you can see it's fairly close. It's, you know, they're all in the sixties to the negative. The weakest, the lowest amount of no's, which would mean the highest amount of thinking you should have levy dollars involved on improving internet access was in the third district. The rest of the districts are, again, between sixty-five and sixty-seven percent, so statistically not significant there at all. I did want to break this one down as well by the seven zones in the county, and you can see here that, again, the northern half of the fifth district has the lowest amount of support for using tax dollars for internet, again, because of what they have in Melrose. But the strongest area of support, although it's, again, it's within the confidence level, the northern half of the third district and the southern half of the fifth district are both in the mid-forties for, looking for county to use tax dollars to help with internet access. I didn't also-
Mr. Hammond-
Yes?
One statistic you don't have is the number of people that don't have internet access, should we be using tax dollars to acquire internet access?
Good point.
I, I would think those people that already have the access would maybe be writ negatively upon using tax dollars opposed to those people, of course, that do not have the access, but of course, that's, I think, human nature, so.
Certainly, it's something we can look at. I think there was an economic study that said that roughly, you know, eighty-five to ninety-five percent of the population already has internet access in the county, so it's just a matter of, what, do they have what they want for it?
Yeah.
So that, but that's something we can certainly look at at some point in the future.
What I'm saying is that if, if there were fewer people with access, that number of having government support, I think, would be much higher.
I, I agree. All right. So I did then want to look at how this question changed regarding, depending on how much income your household had. And as you see here, it's, it is, you know, slightly significant. You have, the folks who have a household of under fifteen thousand a year, a third of those households think that we should be using tax dollars, but that number increases over time, so that by the time you have a household income of over a hundred thousand, you're at thirty-eight percent. So then, again, the more income your household has, the more they're in favor of using tax dollars to improve the internet access in the county. All right. So the next set of questions talked about public safety, and again, you just heard a presentation from the sheriff, so these will hopefully tie into some of the themes that he was discussing. Overall, how safe do you feel within Stearns County? And again, this is skewed to the left, so over half the population either feels safe or very safe being inside Stearns County. A large chunk, thirty percent of the people feel neutral, and there's about fifteen, just under fifteen percent that feel unsafe or very unsafe. Again, looking at how that breaks out between the different commissioner districts, you can see, again, we have a split between east and west, where the people in the west end in the third and fifth districts are over sixty percent in terms of feeling safe in a positive, either that they agree or strongly agree that they're safe in, in the county. And in the metro area, between the first and the fourth districts, that falls down beneath half. In terms of age breakouts, the older that you are, the more likely you are to feel safe inside the county. Pretty significant split between the twenty-five to forty-four group and the forty-five to sixty-four, where it then jumps by about fifteen, twenty percent. In terms of gender, males feel safer in the county than females do by about thirteen percent. In terms of how people feel in terms of safety by race, people who are white feel safer than people of color. That's, again, by just over ten percent difference there, so that is a significant measure. The ninth question was, in the past year, has anyone in your household been a victim of crime? And again, the crime and safety was, again, the number one concern by people in the county in terms of issues that they're, they're concerned about, at twenty-seven percent. In terms of people who indicated that someone that was in their household was actually a victim of crime, that number came back at just under twelve percent. So that's an N of about thirteen hundred people in the survey that indicated they had been a victim of crime. And so here, I broke it out, again, by commissioner district, and I did give the number of people who responded positively by district, so you can kind of see what those numbers are, to put that into context for you. As you can see, the first district, of the people who responded yes, thirty-six percent of those people were in the, in the first district. The fourth district came in second, and the third district came in the, the safest in terms of the least amount of crime that had been experienced by their households, at seven percent. Question number eleven asked about the customer service of the sheriff's department and the overall satisfaction with, with the sheriff's office. And this is fairly close to a bell curve. It does skew a little bit to the left in terms of the fact that you have only ten percent giving the sheriff's department an excellent rating, and eighteen percent give it a, a poor rating, but it is closer to a, close to a bell curve. You can see that twenty-five percent, yeah, twenty, twenty-two percent give them either an excellent or a very good rating. I did want to break this out by commissioner district too, to see if there's areas in the county, because obviously, if you live in St. Cloud, you're less likely to see sheriff's cars, since you're more apt to see the city police cars. I also want to note that on this one, because I wanted to take a look more at the poor ratings, I flipped the chart upside down so that the excellent ratings are on the bottom and the poor ratings are on the top, so you can kind of look at it from that perspective. And so you can see that in the first and the fourth districts are where you have the highest amount of poor ratings at twenty-two and twenty-three percent. And in the second district, you have the least at twelve, and then fourteen and fifteen in the third and fifth. Although you also see that in the first district, you have the largest amount of very good ratings for the sheriff's department at twenty-eight percent. So, it, it's close to a, you know, a, a bell curve within each commissioner district. I would say the fourth district is probably the most skewed toward the negative aspect because you have fifty percent of the population that either rated the sheriff's office for or, for or fair or poor, sorry.
Steve, hold on, what was the date this was actually sent out?
This was sent out in September, end of September of last year, and the results were brought in by the end of October, so there was a month period. Question thirteen asked about the dispatch center. So the question twelve asked, you know, have you contacted the dispatch center? And then number thirteen was, if so, how was, how did you view their customer service? And so you can see that the customer service for the, just under two thousand households that called the dispatch center was very good. Over half the population indicated that they thought the dispatch center was either excellent or very good in terms of the service. Question fourteen, we now moving to the transportation system. This one looks at the overall condition of the roads, and again, based on the fact that conditions of the roads was the second category that people were concerned about, it's not surprising then that this shifts a little bit more to the right than to the left. You can see that we have about, just under sixty percent of the population that feels that the conditions of the county roads are at least good, but you do have twenty-nine percent of the population, that's a significant amount, that considers the county road system to be just fair. Question fifteen, and it's, you know, ironic that I'm giving this presentation today when the road crews have been out, I asked about what the citizens' thoughts on how we do our job at snowplowing, and this one skews more to the positive, where again, you've got about seventy-five percent of the population surveyed that indicated that they thought that the county does at least a good job of maintaining the, the roads during snowplow season. I did also want to break this question out based on commissioner district. Again, I've got the poor sticking up at the top inverted, so you can look, you know, to see if there's any trends there. And it's not extremely statistically significant. You have most people in most districts saying that we do, again, a good job. If there's anything that seems to stick out at me, it's that in the second district, you have the smallest amount of, of, you know, people who think that it's just, just fair. But you can look at the bottom, that the numbers for the very good and the excellent are not statistically, statistically different from each other, and so that's good to see that it's consistent across all parts of the county, that there's not one area that's sticking out as being better or worse. With question eighteen, we move into questions regarding environmental services, and so only a thou, just over a thousand, thousand eighteen households indicated that they had accessed environmental services within the past year, so that was just over eight percent. And I wanted to break out those thousand households to see where they were, and so you can see that of the thousand households, thirty-four percent of them live in the fifth district. And then the third district had the second highest number, at twenty-two percent. But the first district still had, as you see, about twelve percent of their, of the people who accessed environmental services came out of the first district, which I have to say was a little surprising to me, but I guess it could happen if, you know, you have folks who own businesses, restaurants and such throughout the county. I did put on the, the ends there, so you can see, again, the numbers of folks who were in each district. I wanted to break out environmental services and the folks who are interacting with them based on the income level of their households. And you can see, again, that the largest group of people who are interacting with environmental services are households that have at least a hundred thousand dollars in terms of their income, and that it really does slide off dramatically as you keep on going down the economic ladder there. So, I think that's something that we can keep in mind as we go forward in terms of who we're serving. Question nineteen was looking at what services did you access in environmental services, and so I've, I've listed them all out, in our main users, in terms of septic, plating, zoning, feedlot, food and beverage, and another. And you can see the percent of the surveyed population that answered yes to each one of these individual services, as well as the number that are indicated there. The column on the, on the right shows you which district was the most numerous that actually had households using that service, and not surprising, the fifth district is the one that's using most of those services. Although, you can see that for the second district, they are using plating services and food and beverage more than the other districts are, so that was interesting. Question nineteen, I wanted to take a look at then those services and break those out based on the, again, the income levels of the households, and you can see that for all of these services, with the exception of feedlots, the largest percentage of the, of the households utilizing those services, again, are all households of at least a hundred thousand dollars per year. Feedlot being different, because, as you see, the largest percentage there is the fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand dollar households, and I would guess that's because farmers, again, depending on the year, can make very different amount of money. Going into question twenty, it's your customer experience with environmental services and the staff, and you can see that this response was skewed significantly to the left, that we have a response of more than sixty-five percent that indicated at least very good service from our environmental services department. Question twenty-one was a bit of a surprise one for me in terms of asking households how often they've used the household hazardous waste facility or the mobile collection sites that we have within the last year, and just under two-thirds of the households indicated that they have never used the, those services within the last year. And so I think that gives us something that we can use to work on in terms of outreach. Question twenty-two is looking at county parks and how often people have visited those, have you visited these parks within the last year? The two most visited parks that households answered yes to were both Quarry Park and the Lake Wobegon Trail. Again, you can see the numbers of the respondents who answered yes to each of these parks. And again, on the right column, I did indicate from which district you got the most yeses for any, any one of these individual parks. And each district turned out to be the highest number for at least one of these, these parks. And the second district had two, Mississippi and Wildwood. Wildwood's numbers, I think, are depressed because we haven't done as much development work there in terms of making that park accessible in a meaningful ways we have the others. Question twenty-three asks, again, a customer service question in terms of what do you think are the quality of, of our parks facilities? And again, way far and away, this is a very good response in the fact that you have about eighty, eighty-five percent of the population saying that our parks facilities are at least good. And again, you have a strong thirty-seven percent saying that they're very good. Question twenty-seven was just a dichotomous question, asking whether or not households were aware that they can pay their property taxes online, and just under two-thirds of the households indicated that they were aware. So, now, we can ask a follow-up question next time that indicates, you know, have you used that service now that you, you're aware of it? Question twenty-eight is a question asking about whether or not your household has accessed human services within the last year. And so fifteen percent of the households indicated that they have accessed human services in the, in the last twelve months, and that's about, you know, two thousand households, if I recall. So wanting to break that out by commissioner district, you can see that, you know, again, if it's a nice bell curve, even distribution of folks, you would expect twenty percent of the, of, you know, of the population who answered yes would come from each district, and it doesn't quite work out that way. You see that we have just over half of the population that answered yes either live in the first or the second district. And then you've got the lowest amount coming from the third district, where it was only twelve percent of the households that responded. In terms of the age of the people that are accessing human services, two-thirds of the individuals are either between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-four, forty-four or forty-five and sixty-four, and then again, you have smaller populations for both the, the younger and, and the senior citizen population. Gender, it's a fifty-eight to forty-one split in terms of males and females of, of the folks that are accessing the services. In terms of the race, ninety percent of the individuals that are accessing human services are white, and just eight percent are people of color. In terms of the customer service for, for human services, for the eighteen hundred households that indicated that they have accessed human services in the last year, you can see about sixty-five percent of the people are saying that it's at least good. Again, this does skew a bit to the left in terms of the fact that you've got twenty percent of the individuals are saying that customer service is only fair, and thirteen percent is saying that it's poor. Again, that's something that we can certainly work on in terms of finding out more the attitudes of what makes up those subsets of the population.
Want me to wait?
No, go ahead.
Okay. In this particular slide, my observation would be that people interact with human services, that's not their preference. It's, it's, they interact with human services because of the need, so this doesn't surprise me.
No, and I, I would certainly agree that if you're somewhere on probation, you're probably not there by choice, and you're, if you were someone who answered this question, you probably gave them a poor or, the most affair rating, so. Question thirty was the same thing for veteran services, to look at how many households had accessed the veteran services in the last year. And again, it was just under twelve, just under ten percent of the population that had answered yes to that question. And in terms of the age breakout, you can see two-thirds of the people accessing veteran services are over the age of forty-five. It's, those are the two biggest groups. The customer service rating for veteran services is a very positive score. You can see that over half the population indicated that it was at least very good. Question thirty-two is the license center. You can see eighty-four, just eighty-two percent of the population indicated they've used one of the license centers within the past twelve months. And the question after that asked, again, for those nine thousand six hundred households that answered yes, what services were they using? And so you can see of those that answered yes, the highest service was tab renewal, followed by vehicle registration, that came in well second, and passports, as a unique service, came in a distant third. In terms of the customer service responses for the county license centers, again, this is a skewed positive response, where again, you've got just about eighty-five to ninety percent of the population saying that the customer service that we, they get from the license centers is at least good, and it's a very strong response in both the excellent and the very good customer service areas. Question thirty-five asked residents if they have contacted an elected, an elected official regarding the community issue, and only eight point nine percent of our households indicated they've reached out to an elected official to talk about something that concerned them. So of those folks, again, wanting to break out and say by commissioner district, you know, who's asking you, who's reaching out to you? Again, if we're completely consistent, you would expect that it would be a twenty percent for each district, but it's not. The first and second districts are over twenty percent, making up just over half of the population that responded yes. Just at twenty percent for the fifth district, so Steve, you're exactly where I expected you to be. And then it's-
I tried.
And then it, it's lower for the fourth and third districts, with the third district coming in at twelve percent response rate. The thirty-seventh question asked residents to indicate whether or not the county government was meeting the needs of residents, and this is about as close as you can get to a true- And this is about as close as you can get to a true bell curve, where you see that huge spike, you know, over half the population says that we're doing a good job of meeting their needs. Very good and fair are balanced out. And then just you have that extra three percent on the poor side. But again, this is almost exactly what you'd expect in a bell curve. Question thirty-nine asked overall satisfaction with services throughout the county. Again, looking, looking at your customer service values as opposed to our meeting your needs. And again, this is skewed to the positive, where again, you've got seventy-five percent of the, of the county or more saying that, again, the satisfaction with services is at least good. And twenty-four percent was at the very good. The last question, and again, I think I've gone over it by just about ten minutes, but hopefully you've been born with me. The last question was looking at the top issues that should be addressed in the future. And again, crime and safety still came out number one. It was number one in terms of the, I view this as a pre and post-test question. Pre, you know, that question number two, what is, you know, number three was the, what's the one issue that you, you are concerned about the most? Crime and safety was number one. Then you had the meat and potatoes questions in the middle, where tell me how safe you feel, are you a victim of crime, where it's the reality questions, where it was much less significant. And then at the end, question forty, what needs to be addressed in the future? And crime and safety, again, came up number one for just over half of the, of the residents surveyed. Traffic congestion and then road and county road conditions came in at second and third, again, although dramatically lower than crime and safety. Tax rates came in fourth, again, between two, three and four, they're all within the standard confidence value, so they're really a statistic dead heat. And then number five was North Star Rail Service, thinking that the county should be doing more to address that. So I talked fast and a lot and I've covered a lot of ground. Certainly there's more information that we can continue to dig out of the survey as we have the data set to continue to mine. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Were the number of responses from each district approximately equal?
No, they were not. The third district actually had the fewest number of responses.
So that would have, that in itself would affect some of the
It can. And that's why I did breakouts on many of these questions to try to say, you know, where are the, the differences in terms of the areas of the county? But working with the, the St. Cloud State staff, they did do weighting of the, the variables so that, like with age or, or gender, race, that the, the data has been weighted so that, you know, it takes that into account and nullifies that effect. So the data was weighted for commissioner districts and so that is lessened, but still there.
Anyone else with any questions? Mr. Landsberger? This is a snapshot. I think it would have value if we had a movie, in other words, do this periodically. What's the suggested period of intervals to do something like this? I'm sure Rangel would say we should do it every twenty minutes, but the, I, I'm looking for perhaps a more academic
I, I think, you know, I'll defer to Mike, but I think that, you know, often three to five years is the standard that is used.
One other comment, that most people were appreciative that they got to give this input, but the one critique that several of them did mention to me was that there was no place allowed for a free response.
Well, I understand that.
And that is what one of them said, that assumes that all areas of concern have been covered.
Well, it, it, there's no survey that's ever going to cover all areas. And as you saw when you, on the survey, there wasn't really any room left to put any blanks.
But that was the one critique that came up on more than, from people on more than one occasion.
We, we did have some individuals who slipped notes in with their, with their responses and sent them back. So there were people who, who were creative and came up by the way.
Mr. Chair, I think, you know, as, as we do this again, we can, you know, we can, we can leave room for that, hopefully.
Were there any specific commissioners mentioned in those notes?
No, there were not. If, if there had been, we would have contacted you by now.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. At this point, we're scheduled for a public hearing, but we're going to take a five-minute break first.[875.81]
County Board meeting back to order. And we now are scheduled for a public hearing, but first we'll have an overview by Environmental Services, shall we?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Heidi Wenskowski is here from staff to go through the public hearing and give a brief overview.
Good morning. This request is for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a limited rural manufacturing business in Agriculture 40 zoning district submitted by Brian and Lisa Brophy of St. Joe. Specifically, their request is primarily to manufacture leather products. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this in January, on January 18th, and they did recommend denial of the request. On January 23rd, the Board voted to hold your own public hearing, which is what we're here to do today. We did get one letter regarding this, and that was emailed out to you guys over the weekend, so you should have seen that. And so we're asking for you guys to review the requests and conduct the public hearing today.
Are we ready to open the public hearing? Are there any comments before we do that? If not, let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone that has any comments, please come forward to the microphone, give your name and address.
My name is Brian Brophy. I live at 102 13th Avenue Southeast in St. Joseph. I own Shamrock Leather's. First of all, I want to thank the Chairman and Commissioners for having this public hearing, for the opportunity to speak about our company once again. This is the sixth hearing on this matter in the past six months, so I'm hoping we're at the end of the road on this. I don't want to go too long, but I just want to maybe just go down and go by the numbers of what we do. You all know what we do. We have six full-time onsite employees, 15 part-time offsite, eight to 4:30 hour hours Monday through Friday. We're seasonal, so in the summertime, we do get a little busier, so we go a little later hours and some weekends, but that's a seasonal thing. This is our 50th anniversary. Been around for 50 years. Thirty-eight of those years have been in St. Joe. All that time, no traffic incidents, no complaints by the neighbors. So, you know, as far as our impact on the local community, I don't think it would be much if at all. We don't tan materials, so there's not a lot of heavy chemicals. All we do is make products from leather. We don't tan leather. We don't make light bulbs, as was brought up before. And this is not about a shooting range. This is about our business being able to relocate to this property. I think as a business owner, we have done as much as we possibly can to educate the local residents and the boards that we have come in front of. And I appreciate the Board's willingness to listen, learn, and find a solution for us. And, you know, the county staff that we've had to deal with has been excellent. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak?
Good morning. My name's Peter Leigas. I live on White Oak Road, which is approximately a quarter mile from this, where this facility's going to be going up. A little background on myself, I spent 25 years in law enforcement for St. Cloud Police Department. I was also part of a major crime unit for Stern, Sherburne, and Benton. I've lived in this area for 25 years. There is concern, a couple of things. First off, we have quite a bunch of, quite a few people that are concerned about this that unfortunately weren't able to make it here today. There, with this, when people bought their property, this is all a agricultural area, and our concern is, you know, once the doors open, so to speak, there's going to be a lot of other facilities that could possibly go into that area. Also, though the, the shooting aspect of this is a very big concern of mine, being not something that they're talking about at all in great detail. Some of the things we've heard, that there would be some occasional customers that might come and do some shooting in that area. I'm sure you people are aware of Delton and some of the issues that surrounded that. Delton, though outside of Stearns County, in that Benton County area, that has been around for a number of years, and then residential people ended up moving into that area and had a lot of problems with the noise issue. Kind of just the opposite, we are primarily a residential area, and we're very concerned that, once they get out there, that this could turn into a situation where we have customers that occasionally want to come out and do this and shoot. So, if this thing does move forward, I hope that the Board does have some strong language or that they make sure that this isn't going to turn into a, any type of facility where there's any firearms that are ever discharged in that area. Right now, with it being a, an area for agricultural, they, of course, can do some deer hunting. They do some hunting, you know, during the particular fall months, which is acceptable because the residential people moved into that area knowing that that was part of living out in the country. So I hate to see us go back where the residential people are then exposed to gunfire even occasionally. It would create a definite noise issue and would be disruptive. During the deer season, we hear occasional shots, and of course, we wake up for that. But that's, again, that's acceptable because we lived in an area that was agricultural, and you expect that. But I think that we need to really be aware of the possibility or come out with strong language that this never occurs at that particular site. So I hope that you take that into consideration. Again, I'm concerned with the idea that we are then opening this up, this whole area, to the possibility of being a big commercial area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Anne Reichelt, St. Joe Township Clerk. We support his endeavor. My daughter lives on the road. They've been doing this for 50 years, and I can tell you, I can drive by anytime. If you wouldn't know there was something inside the building, you wouldn't know anything was going on. That firing range, I know that is not part of this hearing. And they've been doing a good business, and I hope you're all aware that Rockville is annexing adjacent to him. Rumor has, a truck stop is coming, and if you think this business is going to cause a commotion, a better truck stop will be a lot worse. I talked to Mark Bodie this morning. He said he's not sure what's going in, but it's in the process of being annexed, and it's definitely going to be commercial or industrial.
Name and address. Give her your name and address.
Anne Reichelt.
Yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? One last time, then we're going to close the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Board, what are your wishes? Shelley, did you have anything more?
If you are inclined to want to approve the request, I suggest you look at the conditions, or you can concur with the Planning Commission. This is not a commercially zoned property. It is still agricultural, and it's a conditional use permit request. A shooting range would be a separate request, so...
So that is no way...
So a shooting range, if it's for the purpose of shooting, would need to be a separate request as a conditional use permit in this district. And that would go through the entire process again.
Would it be possible to put that restriction on the property, no?
Well, it's, it's a part of, it's already there. That's a condition they are required to get a conditional use for a shooting range. If you want to address shooting as in relation to this business, you can certainly ask. I don't think there have been doing any shooting associated with this business, but there shouldn't, it doesn't make sense that leather production and assembly would have shooting associated with it.
I see them shaking their head no in the background.
Right. So, I'll go with that. But hours of operation would certainly be a condition if you're choosing to go that direction.
Any other Board comments?
Yeah, Shelley, could we zoom out on that picture that we have there? Is that possible? Can we get the...
I will say to, hopefully Janet is listening to that. Do we have anything to zoom out?
Not showing that area.
Nothing.
What I, what I want to talk about is, I want to talk about the number of residential homes we have in that area, and that seems to be the integrity of the neighborhood. You've got Pleasant Lake to the south of that property, you know, to the, to the east, it moves towards St. Cloud and St. Augusta, and then, of course, to the west, it moves out to, what, Rockville and, you know, Wade Park to the north. And so what you have is, you have all those homes that are in that area. I forget the number of homes that are in the immediate area. Is it 600? I forget how many it is.
I do not know the exact number, but there is a significant number of homes, we would say.
And the point being is that those people, over the last few decades, have moved there and they've developed small plots as rural residential. And this proposal, of course, you know, destroys the integrity of that neighborhood. When we had the public hearing in, initially, we, you know, we had a good number of people that came in that were very concerned about destroying the integrity of that neighborhood. Those people aren't here today. They were also relatively disappointed in, in the specific zoning that we established as well, but, and many of them can't attend because they're, they're at work today, but yet those feelings still are out there. There's a good number of people that are strongly, strongly opposed to this. The, the cities also, as far as the zoning of this, were strongly opposed. We go Wade Park, we go Sartell, we go Sock Center, Melrose. Those communities told us that this is not what they want to see because they want to encourage manufacturing in their industrial parks. This opens the door to the entire county to be spot zoning, and that's why we had the Planning Commission unanimously recommend denial of this, because it just kind of opens the door to, to chaos, and they're very concerned what, what that means. We take a look at this, of changing the zoning here and putting this property in, there's nothing wrong with the business. It's a great business. These are great people, but we have to look about the future. Once that building is built, and then we say, okay, we're going to limit it to 10 people, who's going to come out there and say, well, they've got 12 people out there, they have to shut down? Okay. Or let's say they move on, they move somewhere else. Now we have a vacated building, and now we have a proposal for something else to come in. How are we going to tell the business, no, you can't come in there because that's not the use we want? And so that property sits empty. But that gets magnified when it happens all the way across the county. So my concern would be, first of all, that we go ahead and we uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny it. And the second part would be, is that we take a look at our comprehensive plan and see how well this ordinance fits into our comprehensive plan, because they are in great conflict. They don't match, they don't go together, and the Planning Commission is somewhat put in, you know, chaos because they don't know how to respond because it doesn't make sense. So my recommendation is going to be to uphold what the citizens and the residents of the area want. They don't want this in there. And the second part is, the Planning Commission is strongly opposed to it as well.
Mr. Nodge?
Mike, I guess I would look, my thought would be, okay, if we look, if we're going to look to the future, look at the planning, zoning, if the city of Rockville does acquire this whole area as part of their orderly annexation, technically, we'd be out of that equation as well, and they could still be permitted, if that gets owned commercial, they would be a permitted use. I am equating this similar to the issue we had with Chad Kramer with wanting to open that gravel pit just to the west of this, where, you know, a lot of people were, were just totally opposed to it until they finally took his invitation and actually went out and visited his site and realized, well, this isn't, you know, what people are telling us it is. I, you know, I kind of, I view this as kind of the same issue. You know, I'm not sure the small business is going to really create an uproar in that neighborhood. That's my take on it.
Anyone else?
I'd like to respond to that, Steve. And, and because of the uniqueness of its location, the north part of that does abut that potential commercial property.
Right.
Okay? And, and by all means, that area being along Highway 23 and Highway 94 is conducive for industrial development and commercial development. So with this piece too, if you would, to come from the other side, my, my problem I have with it is the access off County Road 6 and the business coming out there and that, the property itself, if, again, if I mentioned, if I were king, of course, I'm not king, but it would be to divide the property in half, the front half, make it residential, have a home there, and the back half, access from the north half and make that, you know, industrial, use that also for perhaps ponding, water conservation, whatever, and be part of the industrial piece to the north. And it would be a very much natural buffer, but I don't own the property, I'm not doing the, the planning on it.
But how would you create a natural buffer? Because the noise is going to be there coming from the north. So now whoever bought this and you make that residential is going to have the same issue.
Give me zoom out.
I have no control over that right now.
They're hearing you.
Okay.
I mean, I understand there's residential dwellings.
Oh, yeah, all around.
And, and, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming these residential owners, if they have, you know, guns, can, you know, target practice in their backyards and whatnot all as well. And I don't even think that is even an issue here with what's on the table as far as the, you know, CUP.
Mr. Lenzmeyer?
The horse is dead. I move approval.
Mr. Lenzmeyer has approved, has moved approval. Is there a second?
I will, I will second with, with having a discussion on what the findings of fact are and also what the conditions would be.
Shelley, is that what you were going to?
Yes, I was just, as long as we got to conditions, then if that's the direction.
Yeah. Okay, so on the conditions, I would want to make crystal clear that there's no target shooting, and my understanding is that that would be a separate application. So I'd, I'd want that, that part crystal clear. I've got a couple of other notes here. Would, would this CUP become, if it's approved, would it become null and void upon annexation?
I don't believe it would become null and void. That's a decision that the local government that's doing the annexation would have to determine how they want to proceed with it. But this conditional use permit would stand with this property. So the property is zoned agricultural. It's this conditional use permit for leather assembly at this location at this time, so that's the specific, specific business. If they would go out of business, then the next business to come in would have to come in for a conditional use permit unless it's leather assembly. So more than likely, it would be a different type of business, but we hope and anticipate if they continue for another 50 years that we won't have that issue.
Okay. If it's approved, what kind of a review process do you have to ensure compliance with whatever the conditions are?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, we typically will go out as a part of the site plan process because they have to get a building, a construction site permit, and we will be working with them. This also requires the accessibility code, so we'll be out looking at that. And this is a, there are a lot of people in the area, so if they're working outside of the normal hours of operation, I'm sure we will be getting a call. If something is out of the ordinary, we will get a call and we will be looking at that. So it's, it's typically when we have a lot of eyes on it as, you know, like some of our mining operations, we get a lot of, of calls if there's our, if there are concerns.
Okay, so we can put language in there, you know, even though it's a separate application, we can put some language in here about, about shooting of any type? Like the target shooting I'm talking about?
No target shooting associated with the business is, I think, where you were looking to go.
Right.
But anybody can do that in the area if that's allowed by the law currently, but we're saying associated with this business. Now, if they would choose to make an application for a shooting range, that's a completely different thing.
Right.
And they would have to come in and go through that process.
That's off, that's off the table.
Right.
So how, how about, like, hours of operation, employees, those are issues. What, where's that at? Do we have suggestions?
The Planning Commission did discuss hours of operation extensively. What they had landed on was 7:30 to 6, 7:30 a.m. to 6 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:30 to noon on Saturdays with no operation on Sundays, is what they had discussed at the Planning Commission meeting.
Why don't you give me those numbers again, from when to when?
It was 7:30 a.m. to 6 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:30 to noon on Saturdays.
Okay, and how about numbers of employees?
The ordinance limits the employees to 10. 10 onsite employees.
Okay.
They currently, I believe, have six.
How about lighting? Lighting is an issue a lot of times in areas like this.
Yep, there are lighting standards in the ordinance. I believe they were proposing one or two just security lights on the outside of their building.
They would have to meet the requirements of the ordinance with that.
And signage?
Signs there are allowed 32 square feet.
And that's, that's all set in the ordinance?
It's all in the ordinance, yep.
Okay. You know, this application came to the Board last fall sometime through the Planning Commission, and then because it did not, the, the, the County Board did not agree to rezon the property, so we had another, we had an application where, where we adopted an ordinance called limited manufacturing, I think was the right, is that the right term?
Limited rural manufacturing.
Limited, limited rural manufacturing. Can you tell us or tell the Board what can happen in a limited rural manufacturing? Is that what you called it, or what did you call it?
Yes, limited rural manufacturing. There are some options available.
Okay.
But as, as the practice of the office has been, when someone requests a specific use in a, an area, for, for example, under that category, then only that use would be allowed to be moving forward. So if they would go out of business, someone else would come in with leather assembly, only leather assembly. But if someone came in and said, now I want to do trucking out of there, that's a different conditional use permit, and it would have to come back through the process.
So it would be limited to what this application has currently?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Can we vote?
Unless you want to go through some of the other potential uses in the future?
Well, just, just summarize if you can.
Right. So in general, limited rural manufacturing is light manufacturing located wholly, contained within a building for up to 10 people at a time. And light manufacturing can include processing, fabrication, assembly, treatment, packaging, storage of products, lumber yards, machine shops, sheet metal shops, plastics, electronics.
Okay, I would like to be clear on what the conditions are. So can we as a Board kind of develop some conditions and findings of fact and kind of go through that process so we're doing this correctly? Can you lead us through that, Shelley?
I think we, Heidi, I'm going to have Heidi go through the conditions that we had within the staff report so that you're clear on what those are.
Okay.
All right. So the first one, the state accessibility code is required to be met and will be addressed as part of the building permit from St. Joe Township. If the use creates one acre or more of new impervious surface than a stormwater management plan is required, the signage must comply with Section 7.24 of the ordinance, which limits it to 32 square feet per side, limit of two sides for the sign. Number four, the existing vegetation that screens the proposed use on the south and east side shall remain in place to effectively screen the use from surrounding residential uses. And then we also had to consider setting hours of operation, and then adding the sixth one for no, no target shooting allowed associated with the business.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if other Board members have others.
Anyone else have any other questions? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second for approval.
There is a motion and a second.
There has been a motion and a second for approval. So all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Roll call.
Commissioner Merrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Nay.
Commissioner Nodge?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgen?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
I think you'll do a findings of fact and conditions, or don't we need a findings of fact?
We have the conditions. If you want us to come back with findings and, and supply those to you as a Board, we can do that.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. And we will do that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And are we ready for item J, environmental services consent items?
Yes.
And there are two of them, I believe?
Yes, we have those two items.
The Board, what are your wishes on the consent?
I'll move the consent items.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Item K?
The next item is K1, packet page 114, and it's the findings for the Hurley rezoning, and Angie Berg is here to review those with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For your consideration, our findings of fact to adopt for the Hurley Family Trust rezoning from A40 to R10. The County Board has had a couple different discussion items on this, most recently February 6 was your hearing, and at that time voted to concur with the Planning Commission and deny the rezoning. So packet page 115 and 116 are proposed resolution to support your decision.
You're looking for a motion, right?
Correct, correct.
I'll move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
And then Angie just is going to give you a quick update related to the Shoreland or the next set of ordinance amendments. How about that?
So I know you have a planning meeting to go to, but real quick, the Planning Commission had a great discussion on Thursday night as it relates to some possible changes to Shoreland standards. We all got together back last fall, so I'm going to take their direction and write some changes up in the ordinance for them to consider on March 15th. That's their next meeting, and at that same time, they'll be considering other miscellaneous changes that we've been gathering over the last year or two. Some relate to manufactured home park because that ordinance is changing. Some relate to when a permit's required based on size. Just a few miscellaneous changes will be presented to the Planning Commission and then subsequently to the County Board and asking you to hold a hearing likely sometime in April.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We are up to issues by Commissioners. We'll start. Commissioner Merrick?
I had an email, I think Steve did, from, from Kim Petman. Remember that? You don't, you understand that totally, Steve? There's, there's some public input sessions on disabilities, and I'm trying to, do you know about that, Mike?
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're conducting...
Sure, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're conducting a study of our compliance with ADA and what changes might need to occur through a consultant, and they've been looking at all our buildings and facilities. And as a part of this whole process, we, we will hold some public hearings. And so we've issued general invitations to the public to come, but we've also done some invitations to certain parts, certain groups and organizations that we think or, or know would have an interest in this topic too.
Okay, I wonder if you could be in touch with, with Kim? This looks like a little different. There's a disability day at the Capitol, and there's a, there's a session at St. Cloud State University.
Oh, okay, that, yeah, that, that is different.
So can you give her a call? I've got her number here for you.
Yeah, yeah. Steve's been in contact with her about this other study, about our own study, so.
Yeah, that's not what I was referring to, but thanks for that, yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll give you her number after a while. Thank you.
Commissioner Persky?
I just have one item, and that is just to give you a heads up as far as Mississippi Park. You know, we have the outdoor archery range up there. We now have a, a group that's approached the county about actually shooting, putting up an indoor archery range, and they would actually look for the financing and operational cost and provide that then to the county as well. So that's in the exploratory and planning stage, so you may be seeing and hearing something about that.
Mr. Nodge?
I don't have anything at this.
Okay. Mr. Lenzmeyer? Randy, do you have anything? Mr. Williams, did you have anything?
Nothing for me, other than we'll head out to the museum.
This meeting is now adjourned. We will be having a strategic planning session at the Sterns History Museum until approximately six o'clock this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. So.